Welcome to the August 6th meeting of Troy City Council. I am Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. We will begin with the invocation by Mr. Bobby Phillips, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Our Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the nation that we live in, for the folks that protect us on a daily basis here within our borders, and the folks that protect us from evil overseas. We want to take into your arms to care for all of my friends and coworkers and relatives in California that are living in or near the fire areas. I want to, again, watch over this council, provide for us as we need, and your loving care we give ourselves. Amen.
My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Twiss? Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mrs. Oda?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Twiss.
I'll sit.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to excuse Mr. Twiss. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss is excused.
We have a special presentation tonight to Ms. Kimberly Shamblin. Mayor Bemish, would you please make that presentation?
For those of you who I know, Rumpke started a Look Who's recycling program. We did it early this year. Tonight, we're going to be honoring a third recipient from our community that has demonstrated that kind of pride in recycling. I would ask if our city engineer, I got Jill Rhodes and I got our street foreman here, Jerry Mollins, if they would come forward and Kimberly, if you'd come forward, you bring the kiddos. I'm going to do this, I'm going to give you the bag, Jerry, and as I do that, for the kiddos' sake, and maybe for all of us, many of you know Dr. Seuss, like most of us grew up with Dr. Seuss. One time, Dr. Seuss made this statement, and it was, I thought, pretty, "Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing will ever get done." Nothing. And so I look at you, Kimberly, and you've done something. You've helped our environment with your recycling progress, and hopefully others in the neighborhood will join forces and do what you have done. And our third recipient, Kimberly Shamblin, in the recycling program. Thank you. For those of you that don't know, you can go to the Troy's website, and there's a link to the survey that you can take. It's just one question, it's simple, it says, it says, "How, why do you recycle?" And Kimberly answered the question, and then we kind of go out over the next few weeks and walk on her trash day. I kind of sneak around there, push it, just make sure, putting her trash aside and watching the way she takes it. So, we try to get somebody from every neighborhood. We had, whether from Wheeler Street, down to Southview, and now down on Walnut Street. And so if you see me outside your house, I get trees, I'm checking to see if they're safe. So, thanks a lot, thanks a lot. Thank you, Kimberly.
Tonight, we have a public hearing. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 035-2018.
Sorry, ordinance number 035-2018, ordinance changing the zoning of a 107.171 acre parcel part of in-lot 9891 from AR Agricultural Residential to, and OC1 Office Commercial District to a planned development.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Fine Carla, 701 North Market Street, Troy, Ohio. I am the applicant, and I'm here to answer any questions the council or the residents may have, and I just am here to support this and trying to do the best thing for the northeast of Troy and bring what Troy needs in an area targeted for the retirement communities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance?
Lester Connor, 1210 South Place Street, Troy, Ohio. My objection is that we're losing too much agricultural land to grow crops, poultry, hogs, cows, whatever, that the citizens and the people of the United States need. And my other complaint about this is that Troy is growing in people, but it's not growing in jobs along with the housing. We need jobs for people. I mean, you can't have an imbalance like this all the time. I mean, something's got to get changed for the, for jobs in Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
My name is Rusty Miller. I live at 311 Eldine Road, formerly on the Miami School Board. My biggest concern with this development, obviously, is it's in the city limits, but it's in Miami's district, is the number one. And the other thing is, with Bill Nance's development, you've got a lot more traffic coming through Sherwood, which has recently condensed down to two lanes. And anybody that I speak to despises going through North Market because it's so congested anymore. I live in Eldine between 25A and Pickle Troy Road. My road has always been busy. I've been there for over 30 years. I've even noticed an increase in traffic since you just opened up the other road with the smaller development. So, if this other 260 houses come into existence, I'm going to need an on-ramp just to get on my road. I know it's outside the city limits, but I have a big problem getting out because of the visibility and the way people drive on Eldine Road, it's very busy. And this is going to influx a lot more traffic on there that, more than that road handle, because everybody cuts through that back way to go to Troy on the north end. So, my biggest concern is all the traffic on the outline areas, as well as the Miami's district itself, because they're, we just, excuse me, I was in helping the development of the new schools out there, and Dr. Rapold is here also tonight. We're going to be overflowed with additional students. I know you're targeting towards a senior community, but you obviously, you're going to have a lot of families moving in, and we're going to be overcrowded in our new school again already. So, that's my concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak against the ordinance? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. This ordinance will now go to our Community and Economic Development Committee for a meeting, and people, anyone in the public is welcome to attend that meeting as well. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the July 16th, 2018 meeting of Troy City Council.
Minutes of Council, July 16, 2018. Public hearings were held on ordinance number 032 and 033, both were rezonings. Committee reports, Recreation and Parks Committee recommended legislation be prepared to permit temporary camping in a fire pit at Treasure Island Park by the U.D. River stewards. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended legislation be prepared, increasing authorization for paving. Also, committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing application for OPWC funds for Riverside Drive Phase III. Utilities committee recommended legislation be prepared, authorizing an upper, an agreement for a waterline loop project with the Board of Miami County Commissioners. Resolution number R31, 2018, increased authorization for paving was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R32, 2018, application to participate in Ohio Public Works Commission funding was given first reading and was adopted. Resolution number R33, 2018, agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for waterline loop extension was given, sorry, first reading. Ordinance number 032, 2018, changing the zoning of a parcel on Peters Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number 033, 2018, changing zoning of parcel on Washington Road was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number 034, 2018, authorizing use of an area of Treasure Island Park by the U.D. River stewards was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 035, 2018, zoning of 107 acre parcel was given first reading, following various comments council adjourned at 7:38 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
All motion to approve, the minutes is read.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Phillips. To approve the minutes, Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Moving on to committee reports, Mr. Lutz, the Chairman of the Buildings Committee has the first committee report tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. On July 30th, this committee met to consider authorizing bidding for the replacement of the heat pumps at the police department. The units are original to the building construction, they've reached the useful life of such equipment, and they should be replaced. One pump failed last year and has been replaced. $150,000 was budgeted for the project. The current cost estimate was $175,000. Additional funds are available from fund balances. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the police department heat pump replacement project at a total cost not to exceed $175,000. Respectfully submitted, Robin Oda, Bobby Phillips, and myself as chairperson.
Are there any questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Lutz. The Community and Economic Development Committee has the next reports from Chairman Mr. Twiss, and in his absence, one of his committee report members, read that. Mr. Swazer?
Thank you, Mr. Kendall. This committee met on July 19th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that 1823 Peters Road Parcel D08-104502, consisting of 24.93757 acres, be rezoned from R1 to R3. At the July 16th public hearing, there were no comments opposing the zoning, or the rezoning. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that Parcel D08-104502 be rezoned from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3 Single Family Residential District, and we recommend that council adopt ordinance number 032-2018. And this is respectfully committed, or submitted by Mr. Kendall, myself, and Mr. Twiss as chairman.
Are there any questions or comments from council? You may continue.
Thank you. This committee met on July 19th to review, review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that 33.3712 acres located Washington Road be rezoned from the county zoning A2 to the city zoning of R3. At the July 16th public hearing, four persons commented regarding the rezoning based on concerns of drainage, maintenance of a ditch, and loss of agricultural land. The drainage and ditch maintenance is discussed in the detailed report. This committee recommends, supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that the parcel on Washington Road be rezoned from A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R3 Single Family Residential District, and we recommend that council adopt ordinance number 033-2018. And this is also submitted by Mr. Kendall, myself, and Mr. Twiss as chairman.
Are there any council comments or questions? Do you have anything further?
No, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Chairman, Mr. Kendall has the Finance Committee report.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. On August 3rd, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee that the application for a loan in the amount of $47,562 be approved to Integrity Services AES LLC Doing Business As Re-U Juicery from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund. This application is for the purchase of equipment and expansion of the business into a neighboring tenant space. This committee supports the recommendation of the Loan Review Committee and recommends that legislation be prepared, approving the $47,562 loan to Integrity Services AES LLC Doing Business As Re-U Juicery, as meeting the intent of the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Program. Committee supports emergency legislation so that this loan can be closed without delay. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Seaver, Mr. Swazer, and myself as Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you.
The non-ordinance committee report is next, from Chairman Mr. John Swazer.
Yes, ma'am, we have one report. On July 30th, this committee met to consider a proposed amendment to the sign code to allow tenants in multi-tenant commercial buildings to consume a maximum of 25 square feet of building signage if the sign code restricts them to less than 25 square feet. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, amending Section 749.1102 to include the underlying wording contained in the detailed report. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Swazer.
You're welcome.
The Streets and Sidewalks Committee has the last four reports from Chairman Mr. Bobby Phillips.
Thank you, Madam President. On July 30th, this committee met to consider authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation to designate the city as a local public agency or the entity in charge of administering the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project in state fiscal year 2022. The city will be the contracting agency for the project. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project, and this is submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Any comments or questions from council? You may continue.
Also, on July 30th, this committee met and considered preliminary consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation for a project of ODOT placing and overlay on I-75 during state fiscal year 2020. This will be at no cost to the city and as part of the project area is, as part of the project area is within the city. Consent is required by, by the city, and it is the recommendation of this committee that the preliminary consent legislation be approved for ODOT to perform the I-75 overlay project within the Troy city limits during state fiscal year 2020. And based on the ODOT format, we support legislation being presented as an emergency measure. Again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council? Please continue.
And on that same bridge overlay, the committee heard and met to consider preliminary consent legislation provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation, and this is for the project to perform structural steel repairs to the State Route 55 Bridge during state fiscal year 2020 at no cost to the city. As a project area is within the city, consent is required, and it is the recommendation of this committee that the preliminary consent legislation be approved for ODOT to perform the State Route 55 Bridge repair project within this Troy city limits during state fiscal year 2020. And based on the ODOT format, we support legislation being presented as an emergency measure, and this, again, is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Any questions from council? You may continue.
Additionally, on July 30th, the committee met to consider a recommendation forwarded by the Troy Planning Commission for council approval of the following, of the following items based on a request submitted on behalf of Kettering Health Network. One, Jackson Street, located between West Water Street to the Great Miami River. Two, a 12-foot unnamed alley located between Adam Street and Jackson Street. Three, .038 acres of West Water Street located west of Adam Street and east of Elm Street. Excuse me. And on August 3rd, committee members Lutz and Phillips met to consider a request that the approving legislation be an emergency measure. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared in support of the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission to approve the vacation of the areas outlined in the summary report. We note that the easement documentation discussed in the detailed report has been received and accepted by the city. The committee supports emergency legislation based on the Kettering-Troy Hospital projects' need to meet their planned development revisions, submittals, materials lead times, and project timelines. And again, this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Heath, Mr. Lutz, and myself as chair.
Any questions or comments from council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to any of the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper.
David Enniching, 1545, Washington Ben Court, Troy, Ohio. I see that you are recommending, you know, the third reading for the property on east, east of Washington Road. I just want to review some things with you. The Troy paper tonight mentioned that the staff advised by law, development had to abide by engineering code and calculations to prevent runoff and will be monitored by staff. Well, I also want to advise that on January 2nd, there was an email from Dan Baker of the Miami County Engineers' Office to Matthew Hest, which, as I think, is an engineering consultant, and that letter said, "The tile systems service a large watershed. The Ohio revised code does not outline, does outline these ditches are not to be obstructed. Please ensure that these tiled ditches are provided a positive, free-flowing outlet if and/or when the subject partials are developed." January 2nd, we received, in the neighboring area, a nice letter from Jessica Missinger that said, "The existing open ditch on the property will be cleaned out and improved with the design to ensure stormwater flows away from the properties to the north." But what about the properties to the south? What's going to happen to them? "The creekway floodplain on the southern portion of the property will be left as is in a natural state and will not be developed or modified." I'm asking, will that be an issue? She also advised that a significant landscape and grease-based buffer will be included between the lots on Washington Ben Court and the real yards of any future homes on the property. As I mentioned in the last meeting, there is a tile on the back of our properties that drains our properties, also part of that field. And if she puts a buffer zone there, will she build a mound that'll act like a dam? Will she destroy the ditch? Will she be able to build trees that will, the roots will damage that ditch? I'd like that all to be considered when they look at that buffer area. When the paper says that the staff will monitor these things, will that be before or after there is a drainage issue? Are they monitoring the drainage issues around developments on State Route 55 and 718? Question.
Thank you, Mr. Enniching. Is there any other comments?
Hi. Kelly Browning, Short Street, Troy, Ohio. And I guess I had a question. I saw some stuff in the paper tonight that I didn't realize was going on. I guess I kind of understood that when the hospital came in, that they would have had all their stuff done and that. Now, as I understand, which somebody will have to tell me for sure if I read this right, you are planning on actually closing Water Street from Elm Street to Adam Street. That section, is that being closed? No. So, what part of water are they talking about they're closing? That's how I read it in the paper.
Mr. Tidderington, do you want to address that?
This is a very rare type of vacation that would be done, and it's called a keyhole vacation. So, it's basically a 25-foot slip that would be cross-cut across the road, full access, not closing anything down, it's just a link between the two sides of Water Street.
Is there a drawing of this?
The reason that they want to do that is so that they do not have to request closing Water Street, so that will remain open.
Okay. And then I have never found out, I even stopped at the development department, and I asked them about where the helicopter was supposed to come in and fly in and stuff, so that it was a safe thing for the hospital being there? And I could not get an answer of where the heliport was going to be and land. I do know at the other hospital, Upper Valley, that when the airport comes, or the helicopter comes in, if you're on that part, you cannot leave and go in your car. So, how is this affecting the traffic and stuff around Troy?
We can certainly provide you with a copy of the blueprint that shows exactly where the heliport is. It's just a landing area. It's on the west side of the building before you get to Elm Street. It's not on Water Street, it's not north of Water Street. It is, it's actually on their parking lot.
Is there going to be a problem, though, when people go to go to back and forth to work and the helicopter's landing? Are they going to have to close that street?
No, we are not, our understanding is there will be no closing. They've, they've checked through with the FAA, and they've gotten all the clearances that they need.
And it is safe for people to be there and they're landing the helicopter, and people's driving their cars and trucks and everything?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay.
Is there any further questions or comments at this point? Mr. Tidderington, I'd like to back up just a second. On Mr. Enniching's comments, is there any comments that you would like to make at this time as far as what Mrs. Mind singer is required to do within that development?
Well, sure, we, you know, the rezoning is only the first part of this. There's a significant amount of review that will be undertaken by the staff, by our engineering, by traffic engineering, all the staff, fire, police, et cetera. We have not received those plans yet. There are some strict guidelines, standards, and laws that we have to follow. We have noted the concerns of the residents, including the gentleman that was here.
Mr. Enniching.
Thank you. And, and those will all be taken into consideration, so we ensure there's no issues with the storm drainage.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any comments? We move on then to resolutions, and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R33-2018.
Resolution number R33-2018, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Board of Miami County Commissioners for the Upper Valley Medical Center, UVM-C, waterline extension loop project funding agreement, and declaring an emergency.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Madam President, we request this go to a third reading.
Without objection from council? This will then go to a third reading. Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R34-2018.
Resolution number R34-2018, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the replacement of the police department building heat pumps. The cost of the project not to exceed $175,000, first reading.
Is there any discussion or questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Swazer to adopt the resolution, or the resolution, yes. Are there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R35-2018.
Resolution number R35-2018, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio to enter into a LPA Federal Local Let Project Agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation. This is for the West Main Street Corridor Improvement Project, which is planned for state fiscal year 2022. First reading.
Any questions from council?
Move to suspend the rules on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Phillips to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-36-2018.
Resolution number R-36-2018, a resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for placing an overlay on Interstate Route 75 within the right-of-way of the City of Troy, Ohio in fiscal year 2020 and declaring an emergency. This is at no cost to the City of Troy. This is first reading.
Are there any comments from council? Move to adopt. Move to suspend. Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Oda and seconded by Mr. Severt to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwaizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-37-2018.
Resolution number R-37-2018, a resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for repairs to the State Route 55 Bridge within the right-of-way of the City of Troy, Ohio in fiscal year 2020 and declaring an emergency. This project also is at no cost to the City of Troy. First reading.
Any questions from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Twilliger to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R-38-2018.
Resolution number R-38-2018, resolution approving the application of Integrity Services AES LLC DBA Re-U Juicery for loan assistance from the Small Business Development, Development Revolving Loan Fund and declaring an emergency. This loan in the amount of $47,562 has been recommended by the Loan Review Committee. First reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mrs. Oda to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwaizer to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to please read ordinance 032-2018.
Ordinance number 032-2018, an ordinance changing the zoning of Parcel Number D-08-104502 at 1823 Peters Road in the City of Troy, Ohio from the zoning of R1 Single Family Residential District to the zoning of R3 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwaizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 033-2018.
Ordinance number 033-2018, ordinance changing the zoning of In Lot 10797 on Washington Road, a parcel of 3.3712 acres in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the county zoning A2 General Agricultural District to the city zoning of R3 Single Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mr. Schwaizer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 035-2018.
Ordinance number 035-2018, ordinance changing the zoning of a 107.171 acre parcel that is part of In Lot 9891, Parcel R-50005200, from AR Agricultural Residential and OC1 Office Commercial District, Troy Plan Development. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. There was a public hearing this evening, and a committee meeting is pending.
And this will go to a third reading and to the committee then? Is there a committee meeting set on that yet?
No, we're waiting to hear back from Mr. Twist to confirm it. We're looking, though, possibly this coming Monday, week from today.
All right. Mrs. Knight, please read ordinance 036-2018.
Ordinance number 036-2018, an ordinance vacating Jackson Street and an improved public alley between Jackson Street and Adams Street and a portion of West Water Street in the City of Troy, Ohio and declaring an emergency. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. First reading.
Any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the rule.
No. I'm sorry, I did not get who made the motion and second. I apologize for that.
Mr. Phillips and Mr. Kendall seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?[1596.14]